Aloha and welcome to the 2022 Maui County Candidate Interviews. Today, we have Buddy Nobrega, who's running for the county seat for Kahului. Buddy, welcome. Nice to have you with us.
Hello, Paul. Thank you for having me.
Buddy, it's a big commitment to run for office, you know, not knowing what the results are, but it takes a very deep commitment from you and your family. What has led you to this decision? And if you could also explain your background, why you feel you're qualified for this important position in our county?
Thank you for the question, Paul, and thank you for everybody here today. I really appreciate the time to speak with everyone. You know, in 2017, my grandfather passed away, and he was someone who was really big in the community in stewardship. And when he passed away, I started into that role, both for our family and our family business. As 2020 rolled around, we lost my aunt, who was also a very big community leader, one who continually showed selflessness. When she passed away, I was kind of thrust into the role of representing our family and our company in the community. And what I found was a true passion in serving the community, in helping solve community problems and being there to be a part of solutions and just seeing how that effect just trickles. And it's just so powerful that I just found a passion in doing it. And that's really my why. I brought my family back from the mainland in 2014 to raise then my two children. Now, me and my wife have four beautiful children. And it's definitely a cool honor to make sure that there's a Maui, a Maui Nui that is there for future generations. So that's kind of how I started on this journey. As far as my background, I am born and raised here. Left after high school to go to pursue a football career and college in the mainland. And then, like I just said, we turned home in 2014. My family on both sides, both my mom's side, which has very humble beginnings, from Kahakula Village all the way to Kea and I, and in between Hawaiian Camp, Pia Tāng. So that's where my mom's side comes from. Very, very humble beginnings, a lot of military background, a lot of hard work to raise up big families in the plantation eras. On my dad's side, I would be fifth generation. We have both a small business that does multiple things as well as manufacturing. And then, we have a small cattle ranch that has been operating for well over 60 years. So that's a little bit about my background. I currently serve as Board of Water Supply Water Board Chair. I've been on the water board for three years. I serve on the Sanani School Board and its Finance Committee. I also serve on the Farm Bureau Finance Committee as well. And then constantly trying to do whatever we can to help other, work with other nonprofit groups to serve our community. A little bit about my background, Paul.
Thank you, Buddy. Our next person to ask questions is Lucien Denay.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Welcome, Buddy, and nice to see you here. I have had the pleasure of watching a few Board of Water Supply meetings. And thank you for your service there and all the people who serve. They actually do play an important role, I think, in what's going on in our community because they hear from the everyday people who have problems that they bring to the Board of Water Supply and say, can we take a second look at this? So that's an important role. On the question of water, you see me there a few times testifying on different things. But where do you stand on how we are going to transition from these plantation systems like, you know, the Navaeha system, you know, the Wailuku Water System? There's one on Molokai, same thing, Molokai Ranch. You have the old one from the remains of Maui land and pine on the west side, and we have East Maui. And our plantations have run their day, but we need the systems. So do you support the charter amendment that's being proposed at the council right now? Or do you have any other solution? How are we going to make sure that these systems actually serve the public? And what's the role of the county in helping manage them?
Well, thank you for that question, Lucien. And thank you for your, when you bring your manao to the table, everybody listens at the board meetings. Thank you for all that you've done in the name of water for Maui County. You know, that's a very interesting, intricate question. I will agree with you 100% that these systems are not made to last this long. It's a miracle they're still really working. And it has to be addressed. Water is obviously very important, as you all know. My grandfather served 35 years on the water board back when it was autonomous and semi-autonomous. I didn't know it then, but growing up with him and listening to water stories, I didn't realize how much it would come back and play a role in my life here in Hawaii. I'll take the three systems differently. With the Navaeha system or the Wailuku Water Company system, to me, it's our most important, top-notch. And the county's role in that is to definitely acquire it, it would be my opinion, and then bring it up to standard so that we can serve the people. By my understanding, its service is 70% of the county's freshwater usage. 70% is a very big number. And I have expressed on the board, as I'll express here, that I'm very worried should something happen to that system, which I hear is in not the best shape. There are mixed, I've never been there, but I will say that I've heard from people who have that it's in a very poor shape. And that does scare me, being that it provides so much water to the general population, from Paia to Mauna to Malaya, back up to Wailuku. I mean, that's what that system covers. So that would be my top priority should I become a council member with the support of the community. That would be the first one I would definitely address. The Molokai one is another one that really puts the people of Molokai at a disadvantage. I'm not as familiar with that system because Molokai Ranch doesn't have much that I can find data about it. But the people there definitely know the system really well. I've talked to quite a few, and they realize that they could take on that system as well and better service themselves. The East Maui system is the hardest. And all I really say on that one is I'm committed to find the best possible solution. There are a lot of solutions out there right now that have been recommended. I don't know if any of those solutions have been all the way through that is best for the community. But we need to find a solution for that system as well. And I don't know what that looks like. But I intend to spend a lot of time working on that one because to me, the other two are a little more straightforward in their relevance.
Mahalo. All right, we're moving on to Bruce.
Yes, Bruce Douglas?
Aloha. Greetings. For me, one of the big, important things is who does a politician work for? Does he work for the people in the Ina? Or does he work for the big money interests, like has been tradition here on Maui? The Maui Farm Bureau has often been thought to be something that serves the big farmers, the A and B, the Monsanto's. The Maui Farmers Union United was created to try to support the small farmers. Tell me about your, what you do with the Farm Bureau? And how do we know that you'll work for the interests of the people in the Ina and not the big money interests?
Well, I'm on the Finance Committee, so I help oversee the budget. With my business background, they were looking for people who are in ag that have that kind of point of view. So I help with that. As far as what kind of politician I would be, Bruce, I'm not a politician. Never thought I would be, never thought I'd be here. I'm a concerned, homegrown Hawaiian Portuguese man that came home to raise his four children. I do not intend, so I don't know if this question will come up again, but I do not intend to leave my family business. So to your point of who controls who, I would be asking for your support and the community's support to serve them if this wasn't a paid position. I'd literally just find a passion in serving all of them. Part of my campaign is to be inclusive, is to engage with everyone because that's the only way we'll move forward together. Now, I understand it's easier said than done. But as far as big money interest or small money interest or anybody's interest, I will listen to it as my style of managing is to listen to the people on the ground first and gather as much strategic information to those who have studied and then think with my mind and my heart. And that's how I'll vote on the council. I can make you that commitment. But I'm not for sale by anybody, and this is being recorded. I'm not doing it because I need to be famous or any of that sort. I would much rather stay home and be with my family and work the business and just enjoy. But some of us have to step up because we're not moving in directions. We're not moving at all, in my opinion, in some of the issues that we are at hand. So I hope that answers your question, but I am not for sale in any way, shape, or form. I'm not looking for a job. I'm looking for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you for answering that tough question.
Next will be Shay Chan Hodges.
Hi Shay.
Hey, buddy. So that was interesting. I liked what you said there. But it's sort of, is a little confusing to me based on my next question because I'd like to ask you some questions about some of your recent community activities that were very political. So specifically, your role as treasurer of Hui O Maui, which is a political action committee that I believe spent over $300,000 in the last election to support opponents of progressive council members. And you were the only visible Maui president for Hui O Maui, and yet you refused to answer questions about who was behind the pack. So now that you're a candidate yourself, my questions are, and I'm going to read them all and then I can repeat them. But are you still treasurer of Hui O Maui? And if not, what is your current status with the organization? Do you believe that campaign financing needs to be transparent to voters? Can you tell us today who were the primary donors in Hui O Maui? And will Hui O Maui be attempting to influence this year's election?
Okay, so if we could, that's a lot of questions in one.
I know, I know.
Let me back up to the first one. The first one is my participation right now. I have no participation right now in Hui O Maui. I was only the chair of the Charter Commission, which is an offset committee of the entire committee, not the entire committee. So that's the first question. What was the second question?
Do you believe that campaign financing needs to be transparent to voters?
Campaign financing, yes. Yes. Simple enough, yes.
Well, so that is in contradiction to Hui O Maui. It was not transparent.
Okay, so let me elaborate. I'm someone that likes to learn from experiences. So I learned from that experience that it should move forward. But to also clear up part of your question, I didn't not take questions. I did quite a bit of interviews. Actually, Silverbeat did an interview as well on me. I was learning for the first time when people want to interview you and only want to talk about one part of the subject. And that was very difficult for me to navigate. When someone wanted to ask me for an interview, I did. When someone asked me only about the money, I was kind of like, wait, do you only have a story about the money? Or do you have a story about why I'm doing what I'm doing? And since I have the time today, I will let you know why I did what I did. To clear up the record, I did what I did because I feel at that time the changes put forth by the council was the wrong timing. I probably wouldn't have gotten involved had it not been COVID. But the first reading that came out in March, we were in lockdowns. The second reading, when we came out in late June, early July, we were in lockdowns. And I did what I did because I thought it was morally wrong by the council to push that agenda while most people were trying to find out where they could get their food. Or most people didn't have jobs. So I don't think the community had the ability to really get to know the issues. And that's why I did what I did, especially since it was one year before some of the people on this panel were on the Charter Commission, which happens every 10 years. So I also thought that would steal the opportunity from the charter as it's set to go through the process. Wasn't that I was against every charter amendment. It was just that morally for me, I felt that it was the wrong time and it was unfair time to try and push that too.
So just to clarify, the issue that folks had a problem with was they didn't know who the donors were who were contributing to opposing, you know, these candidates. And obviously, in democracy, we all have different opinions and we can, you know, be active and push whatever agenda, you know, we want as private citizens. But when there's big money donors who are hidden, that's where people have the issue. So that is, obviously, you and I have gone head to head on all kinds of issues, and I have no issue with that. But my question is, is when, are you okay with the fact that who those donors were were hidden from the public? Because that was the question that you refused to answer.
Well, like I said, I learned from that mistake. I wouldn't call it a mistake. I learned from that situation. And that's why my stance has now changed, that that took the focal point away from what was the message I was trying to get across.
Okay, so can you tell us who those donors were?
Well, I don't have a list in front of me, Shay, but it's.
I know, but I'm sure you can remember some of them.
I can tell you that all the donors that helped the charter amendments came from the state of Hawaii.
Okay, well, that doesn't tell us a whole lot, though. I mean, so if you're, just to me as a voter, if you're actually running on transparency, I think that would be something that you could commit to, is that you could publicly on your website say who those donors were. That would help people understand that you've changed your position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We'll have Lloyd next.
All right, aloha, Buddy. So I have two questions. My first is, what do you think the minimum wage should be in 2022?
I got to ask you a clarification. Well, minimum wage or living wage?
Well, that would be for you to define. That'd be for you to define what you think the minimum wage, the legal minimum wage should be in 2022. We know what the livable wage is from research, but what do you think the legal minimum wage should be in 2022?
Well, I can tell you right now, nothing less than $16 an hour would probably be in 2022 would be something I would support and something our business supports. But as far as the livable wage, it's much higher. Does that answer your question now? And I do support the, I do support the changes made by the State House and what they're trying to do. I do believe that it's going to take a little too long. And by the time we get to 2024, it'll have to change again. But it's starting in the right direction.
Okay, so that's helpful for my next question, the follow-up one, which is, would you work at the county council, at the county level, to increase the minimum wage after you're elected, the year after you're elected?
Wow, that's a really good question. I didn't, Alan, I'm not, I'm not sure the county has that ability to regulate that. But if it did, I would gladly support working towards that. I think that can only be done at the state level, but I could be mistaken. But I would definitely support moving it up, especially for Maui. As we know, the outer islands have a much higher cost of living, which plays a role in everything we do. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so what if the state only had jurisdiction over the minimum wage? What would you do as a county councilman?
Oh, you definitely have to.
To get the state to increase it at a faster timeline than it is now?
Well, Maui has a lot of community groups and definitely working with them and working with state legislators from Maui in the Senate and the House, creating those relationships, both from a county level and just getting up there and meeting with them and really, you know, showing, you know, even testifying. If that's, you know, I think it's a lot more impactful when other elected officials testify on behalf of things they support.
I guess I'll ask one more follow-up quick question. From my experience, the state legislature is controlled by the caucus, the Democratic Caucus. And that many of the legislators don't have a lot of power because it's the caucus that makes decisions. So how would you influence there, therefore, the caucus?
Well, I think it's, you know, how much people you can engage with to gather that group, that body that you speak for. You know, I think that's the best way you could do it. You know, when you have an engaging type of situation where you can say, I've talked to this people, this people. And, you know, to Shay's former point, if you can make a list of everything and everyone and every group that would be okay to sign off with you as someone who is speaking with their manao behind it, I think that's a real powerful statement in today's world. And I kind of, I agree with you that there's a lot of, you know, caucus politics that isn't something that I'm, you know, I'm familiar with, but I'm sure I know it's there. And for that much, that's why I prefer to run for county council because it's more community engaging. It's more direct impact to the people you live with, your neighbors. And that's why, you know, it's part of the reason why I'm looking for this kind of service.
Great, thank you, mahalo.
Next, we'll have Anne Cathleen.
Hi, Anne. Aloha.
Aloha, Buddy. Nice to meet you. My question is about tourism, specifically over tourism. So according to DBED, the Department of, let's get this right, Business Economic Development and Tourism, there is an average of 61,218 visitors in Maui on any given day in 2022, which is double that of the previous year. And so do you feel that this is a priority issue to address over tourism? And can you share like what you know has been done so far? What needs to be accomplished, more accomplished to address this problem?
I absolutely.
Do you feel that we have the infrastructure to support this, this growing number of visitors here?
Well, I actually feel it's a top priority. I think our community has spoken as a whole on this particular topic that we need to work on moving away from tourism. I think, I think, I believe that as a whole, we all agree that the plantation era ended and into the tourism era. And now, as a community, we want to move away from that. I think it happens with long-range planning, like the community plants. And that's how you kind of move in that direction. I do believe that unfortunately, we're too dependent to cut it off cold turkey. But we do need to work on ways like getting rid of illegal vacation rentals or even considering all vacation rentals in community residential zoning to definitely alleviate the stress it brings to our neighborhoods and then work our way out. As far as infrastructure, we need infrastructure for our community members. We need, our citizens need infrastructure, roads. And that is a priority of mine as well. I've worked with some people on the board as well as we need to get our water infrastructure set. And the more people that come, it does play a role on our resources. So getting creative in how we do things to alleviate the stress on our resources is extremely important. So those are things that I would address in that way. The other way would be to find new avenues of industry that keep us in our circular economy more independent and sustainability. It's one of my pillars. Economic, cultural, and wellness are part of what I feel we can create the next, you know, next economic drivers. And we definitely need to work on our healthcare system. And that will give us the opportunity of having a new economic, a new economic avenue engine. Another way is culturally, we, not just Hawaiian culture. I'm Hawaiian and I definitely love the privilege of being blessed to be Hawaiian. But we have a lot of cultures here. And culturally is what makes Hawaii and Maui especially special because we're culturally diverse. So supporting the different avenues of our culture to turn that into a way that we can, you know, use that to influence exporting, you know, specialty items that we make here that are special to hopefully have people that still spend money but not have to be here to spend it. And then lastly, would be a top area as well is, how do we diversify our agriculture so that we can definitely keep more of our food here, grow more food here, and that'll create another industry? I think those three avenues will really help us get out of the tourism dependency. And once you're out of dependency, then you can really focus in on how you want to address or downsize. I'll also follow up with a little bit that I do worry with the looming recession and economic on a national scale, what our tourism industry will look like in Q4, Q1 of next year. So we need to move quickly as a community to start diversifying. And I think a lot of people, a lot of different organizations, a lot of people locally have done some great things, some very great ideas. And I think they're starting to pick up traction. So it starts small, but it goes big. Hope I answered your question, Anne.
All right, thank you.
Next will be Mark Joyner.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Buddy. Hey, I need to, I'm mute myself here. So you talked about agriculture. Tell us some of your ideas for addressing the needs in agriculture.
Well, being that my family has agricultural background and grew up playing cowboy, I realized that the way agriculture is moving has multiple facets of not just one product, but one particular type of farm or type of ranching can be diversified to fit a lot of different loopholes. I think what is definitely vital as far as the animal side of things is we don't have enough facilities to harvest. So slaughter facilities and things of that nature really put us in a, really puts us in an awkward situation. I know as far as cattle goes, I believe 90% of all of our cattle raised here go to the mainland. And then something like 96% is re-imported in. Now, I know those two numbers don't match up, but that's the numbers. I'm assuming because of loss or cow crop or replacements, that's something that happens. So finding ways and facilities that, as a county council member, you can work with the working groups that are already there, operating together, that could be shared for storage, for processing, for health, safety. Those are the kind of things I would start in that area. And then the same would be true for the small farmers that do vegetables. I know in our business and working with the national retailers that there are special certifications that need to be had for different types of fruits and vegetables. And that's why you don't see as big of a presence of locally grown products in some markets versus others. Certain vegetables and whatnot don't have to, but a lot of other ones do have to be inspected and do have certain procedures. So something else the county could do to be a fund of facility that would allow farmers of all sizes to drop off the produce that they produce, you know, whether you have two mango trees in your backyard and you don't want it to go to waste. So that would be something I'm really interested in is finding a centralized processing plant that would allow all people who want to participate in our community and feeding our community. So just for an example, if I have two mango trees and I don't want it to waste, I harvest the mango trees and I go down to the community processing plant and they would say, hey, today it's $10 a mango is what we're paying today. And they would take all the mangoes and they would try to resell it then to the markets. And whatever, would it be used would be what the processing facility would donate to the food bank or another nonprofit that would be working would help feed people that can't afford to buy, keeping that circle going. And those are some of the ideas I have, Mark, that I would definitely work towards.
Thank you.
And Buddy. Uh, and uh, buddy, I will ask the next question. And uh, right now, we're in a crisis as a community around our affordable housing. Uh, and not only for uh, those who earn income, but also for our houseless community also. What would you propose as a county council member to address this issue? Uh, and uh, in terms of also not only affordability, but also should it be in perpetuity if the county is investing in those properties?
Um, I kind of work a little backwards, Paul, on that question. The perpetuity measure, I I would, I would rather see some kind of a profit sharing between the county and the owner. Um, but to have some kind of timeframe listed on it. Because in Hawaii, we do know that housing will definitely build people's wealth. Um, I can tell you growing up here in the community I live in that um, is nicknamed Dream City. Um, which was a uh, a very big county private public partnership um, back started in nineteen fifties. I look at around my community and I see how one home in our communities helps three generations. It helps the generation that buys it. It helps the generation that was raised in it. And more than likely, it'll help the the third generation have a start um, in a very difficult time. And then, if you will, it even helped the fourth generation in one way, shape or form. So I think it's very important to allow people to grow um, in the home. And, you know, maybe not a perpetuity thing, but a ten year minimum. And then if you do sell, the county would get a percentage of the, of the, of the um, sale and then the owner would get, not leaving anybody to lose out in that sense. I think we should have all options of housing on the table. But more importantly, back to what I want to stand for is that the engagement of everyone involved. And we have cultural experts, we have environmental experts, we have business experts, right? And we have the county. And we need to bring everybody to the table and really look at the places that we can agree that we could build these houses. And maybe it's all in one place, maybe it's a bunch of small additions to different communities because it goes much further than that when you build another community. You need the state's involvement, you need the federal involvement to help fund it. Um, you have to worry about schools, roads, sewer, water, all these things come into play. So having more minds at the table that have been working towards this for a long time, I believe that the solution is there. I just don't, uh, I just see that a lot of them work separately. And we all need to come together to solve this issue. And then lastly to your question, Paul, I believe the county uh, needs to subsidize these. If you truly want it to be affordable, you know, the county's infrastructure, the infrastructure should be put in by the county. Um, because it'll come back for the county to help take care of its residents. So putting the infrastructure in and, you know, I've heard all kinds of numbers from a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand per unit, which is a big number when you're trying to solve a problem. But it is something that I'm willing to uh, work towards is the government really getting involved and helping subsidize it and then creating programs so that it really reaches the people that need the help. Um, and um, that that would be how I address that.
Um, so right now, we have a situation with our zero to a hundred and forty percent AMI, that's average, medium income. Um, that there is a need for subsidies in order for them to actually acquire any type of housing. Uh, you're, so that means then, as you're saying, uh, whether it be infrastructure, the land purchase and and the infrastructure. If that were the case, that's a significant uh, input from our community taxpayers, from our community, from even bonds maybe. Are you saying that after ten years that those affordable housing uh, units would be taken off the market? And it's a windfall, basically based on our community investment for that family who actually gets that in a lottery or or whatever. So I guess, you know, my concern is, if we look seven generations down the line, then how do we resolve that issue as we look at the escalation of what, one point one million now average? So buddy, please address that in terms of.
Um, so just for clarity, I'm not saying after ten years. I'm saying there needs to be a time limit. I'm giving ten years as an example. I just not saying in perpetuity forever and ever because there at some point the people who live there have to have um, some end to the sharing. Because after generations, to your point, seven generations, there needs to be some level of complete ownership at a certain point. I don't have that answer for you, Paul, but I just use ten years as an example um, of something that maybe after ten years, you wouldn't, if you do sell, a hundred percent of the profits would go back to the county. Or at twenty years, something that has a tier system to obviously incentivize and as well as pay pay the tribute to what the county and the other taxpayers have put in to establish that. Um, is that address what you're asking?
Uh, yes, it does. Uh, thank you. Uh, next we'll have Lucien Dene.
Mahalo, Paul. Um, buddy, I know that your family uh, has a solid Hawaiian roots and um, that uh, this is something that, you know, you feel strongly about. And I'm just wondering, uh, have you in the past ever come out and testified to support Hawaiian kuliana water rights or protection of burials uh, in in places like Maualani or, you know, the Grand Wailea where so many burials have been disturbed and they keep proposing more developments? The the, these are things that um, they don't always come in front of the county council. But um, of course, I think many Hawaiians feel strongly about them. And or or preserving native plant habitats that are proposed for new developments or wetlands that uh, have strong cultural value that are proposed for new affordable developments. So where would we see your Hawaiianness uh, come out on this? And um, you know, have you ever gotten involved in these Hawaiian issues up to this point?
Um, I haven't officially testified to my knowledge at any or on any particular subject. Um, but my Hawaiianness and serving would be here before you today. Um, Hawaiianness is something that is internal and has a lot of kuliana traditionally. You don't go where you're not from. You can support from a distance, but you don't go where that's not your ancestors. Um, and for our family, we have people that represent our family in those situations. So we have kupuna that are leaders that would go out. We have those who step forward to speak in the groups um, from our family. And more than our, just our direct family, but multiple families. Um, that, you know, being a Kanaka, you have thirteen, fourteen, seventeen generations that my mom can trace for you um, back to where the one line started um, that goes back to the days before coming now. So for me, this is me being out there for my fellow Hawaiians um, and being able to serve in that capacity. We all have our roles. I unfortunately wasn't raised with the ability to speak very much Hawaii. But it's my kuliana to make sure my children do. Um, and we can go the history of why that may be systemic. Um, why some of us don't speak and why some of the culture was lost. But the current push is also a motivating factor to, for me to be here today and be involved.
But as a councilperson, how would anyone know what your stands are going to be? Because they've actually, you know, as, when pushes come to shove, they've never seen you. You know, when, when folks in Wahe'ee were facing development of a burial ground, your family's from Naba'e, huh? You you know, it it's like, did any, were people there saying something? Were, were you brought to hearings? Did, did you have an ethic that, that said, well, I need to stand for these things? I think, I think that's a question that a lot of people are going to want to know. That's why I'm asking it. I'm not Hawaiian, so ikala mai. But I I hear this that when I go to, you know, gatherings of uh, of of Kanaka that are concerned, that there's just lip service to things. We may have laws, but those laws disappear when there's money involved. So how how are you going to balance that?
Um, I mean, my question, my answer to you would be that a lot of Hawaiian leaders, native Hawaiian leaders know my family and know what we stand for. So they would know where I stand. And they would reach out to me if they needed me, and I would be there if they called. So that's how I would serve, that's how I currently serve.
All right, and one last question. Are you familiar with our Maui Island plan? Have you uh, uh, ever looked at the uh, the short section on protection of cultural resources to see some of the uh, the goals and policies that um, are our county goals and policies?
Not as familiar as um, I know you are. So I will say no, not familiar enough.
Thank you. All right, I guess we go on to Shay.
Well, yes, we just have, yes, one brief question left from Shay. That'll be our last question. Shay?
Oh, thank you for giving me that last question. Um, so uh, yeah, buddy, um, following up on East Maui, um, you told Lucien that you're committed to finding the best possible solution there. And as you know, the Board of Water Supply put a lot of time into addressing East Maui water and unanimously approved a temporary investigative report which supported con- community control of that water and which you also voted for. So people running for office often talk about what they're going to do once they're in office. But I often wonder what those folks are doing as regular citizens, like a lot of people on this board or on this group. Um, you've been on the board for a few, on the water board for a few ni- years now. You're now chair of the water board. With the county both pursuing leases and pursuing creating an East Maui Community Water Authority, what are you doing currently as chair and a water board member to find the best possible solution? Um, since as Lucien said, the water board has quite a bit of influence.
Um, our last meeting, Shay, we put the Waileku Water Company back up on the agenda. And the administration did say that all talks of purchasing the system had ended. Um, and that both the council and the administration have not budgeted for any purchase uh, moving forward. So that is one of my top priorities is water board chair. Uh, like I said, it does service seventy percent of our fresh water. And that is my top priority as water board chair is to figure out how we can get the council and the administration to really move on something that I feel is a very pressing issue. Um, and that, in my opinion, will be something, um, how do I say this? EMI is a much larger system. So once the county can get the Waileku water system and get the experience of fixing up a system and working a system, to be successful at that will set the roadmap for how we can move in East Maui or Molokai. Um, as Lucien said, but we want to, I I, as the water board chair, would really like to see that as something that we really tackle. Again, uh, as you well know, I have been a big proponent of the necessity of that. And I still, still do worry, should something happen to that system, what we will do? One hurricane or one big storm and enough rocks come down, like what do we do? How do we, how do we get water to the, to the citizens? I mean, so that's, that's how I would address it is that's a big priority for me. Uh, securing the, securing that for future generations. And then creating the roadmap of how to take on, uh, to Lucien's point, a ancient system that we need to move away from.
So do you, do you not think that the TIG report was that roadmap? Because that roadmap is basically being used by the county council as a, you know, not the full roadmap, but as a, the first step in all of these issues that are actually going to be primary issues, not only for the county, but even on a statewide gubernatorial level um, for this um, election. And so I'm not really, I don't think I've heard yet if you actually support the county take getting the leases and the county um, pursuing a water, East Maui Community Water Authority.
Well, I I do, I do commend you and definitely commended you many a times on the, the TIG report and your phenomenal work there. But like I said earlier, I like to talk to the boots on the ground. And sometimes you got to get in there and really see what's going to happen. I don't disagree with the roadmap the TIG put forth. But it's a lot different when you're in, in the middle of the river versus that. And to your point, we had a hard time getting um, a chance to see it, even as board members. We couldn't get to go tour it, you know, all this stuff is private. So all I know is hearsay of what the system looks like, and that's more of what I was referring to. Do I think the county should play a role in getting the leases? Yeah, the county should play a major role in securing any water source because as our model on the Board of Water Supply, right? Water is a public trust, so the county should play a role. Do I think the county should right now go after taking over a system that, you know, we don't know much about and there hasn't been any information about besides of what is written down? That's a big ask, and that's why I'm committed to figure out what's the right and best solution. Um, government taking over everything isn't always the best solution. They've proven that. Um, and that's why I'm working with the community um, as a whole to work on that. But then again, it goes back to kuliana, right? It's something that you put forth very much so. The people of East Maui had the biggest voice on what should happen there because that's directly their backyard, their kuliana. So that's really where it should start. Um, but again, the roadmap legislatively is out there. But as far as building up a system, it hasn't been done before. Um, and every system is going to be unique, especially one like EMI, um, which is, I think it's a third wonder of of America, right? It's like the Washington Monument, the Golden Gate Bridge and the East Maui Irrigation System. That's how much of a wonder it is. And I have not yet been able to see it. I don't know if you have. Um, but some kind of idea of what it looks like would be a better opportunity for us to make the best decisions.
Well, and just, I don't want to take up too much time, but I mean, you do know there's a detailed EIS on the system that um, mahipono, um, thousands of pages long. And I guess my big question to you is, why are you not um, addressing that as chair? As I know, the chair can put whatever they want on the agenda. Why aren't you addressing that as a Board of Water Supply while this process is happening? You know, as we speak, the last three meetings, um, and again tomorrow, um, the APT Committee and now the Great Committee is having all these uh, folks with financial expertise come in and speak. So it's a perfect time for the board. I mean, obviously, if I was chair, I'd be addressing it. Was that just me?
Well, Shay, I won't, uh, I won't be actually able to attend the next board meeting through the scheduling conflict. But I'd love to work with you to put it back on the agenda. But I don't think there's very many people besides you and Lucien that have the experience on that system and what is going on with it. Um, right now. So, I mean, I welcome the opportunity to collaborate and put it back on the agenda so that the public can testify and the board can do its service to the public.
That sounds great, and I have no, no, no knowledge of the water system compared to Lucien. But thank you for saying my name in the same sentence. I appreciate that.
So uh, buddy, uh, we have covered a lot of ground uh, in this past hour. Uh, is there anything that you'd like to say in terms of a conclusion or something that we might have missed uh, that you wanted to have the audience know?
No, I mean, Paul, this is a very thorough interview. I really appreciate your audience's time and the panel's time um, on the questions. And um, you know, like I said, I, I love Maui. Um, and I'm willing to serve Maui in this capacity or any other. I won't stop serving Maui um, as long as I'm here. It's in my blood to serve the community in whatever way I can. I just really feel passionate that I can bring, um, I can bring people together and I can bring fresh ideas to old problems. So I really appreciate Paul for the invite and everyone here today for their questions and people watching. I really appreciate it. Mahalo, everyone.
Great, and I just want to remind our viewers that uh, the voting for the county council happens throughout the entire district, all nine uh, areas for county council. You get to vote for all nine county council members. Mahalo for watching.
Mahalo, aloha, everyone.